Actually, I left my pencil in the office, so I won't break it and scatter it. Thank you very much for retrieving that.
You're welcome.
I hope you didn't spend a lot of time crawling around your hands and knees.
No, somebody put it on the table.
Thoroughly disgracing yourself.
We're on air.
Oh, we are. Oh, dear.
Good evening. It's just a little after seven o'clock, and it's time to open the Newbury Planning Board meeting for February 4, 2015. Chairman Weiss is not able to be with us tonight, so I've been asked to serve as chair. My name is George Morse, and to my far right is town planner Martha Taylor. To my right is John O'Connell, board member, and to my left is Elizabeth Mitchell. So we have a quorum. We can go forward with the business of the board this evening. Also missing, I'm sorry to say, is our associate member, Richard Moss. And he's not able to be here. He's suffering with a cold. Sorry, Richard. First order of business is dealing with the meeting minutes of January 7th and January 21. John, do you have any comments?
I had no issues, no.
Elizabeth?
Nor do I.
Nor do I. And since we're all here for both of those meetings, we can vote for them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Now, moving right on to all business. The first item is master plan, request for proposal. And why this issue was up, this was brought up at the last meeting, and there was a question whether to do it just on the master plan or include both the master plan and the open space and recreational plan. Martha was going to do some research, and Martha, do you have that?
Yes. I talked to Tracy. I also put a question out on the Mass Planners List Serve. And Tracy said in West Newbury, they had actually done them pretty much at the same time, but they did issue two separate RFPs, master plan, and then a couple of months later, the open space and recreation plan, RFP. The same consultant actually ended up getting both projects, and so they were able to coordinate in that way. Mass planners, list serve, most of them seem to be done separately. There was one answer I got from one of the town planners who said they had done it separately, but in hindsight, she wished that they had coordinated it, just because there is so much overlap. But I do think, you know, after thinking about it some more, I think it does make sense to issue the separate RFPs. We're pretty well set with the master plan update. I think it would be helpful to think through the open space and recreation plan update a little bit more to do the same thing that we did for the master plan, which is figure out how much we can do in-house and what we need the consultants for. And if we do issue a separate RFP and get the same consultant for both, that would be helpful, because there is a lot of overlap on demographics, and hopefully, even if they're different people, we can, you know, use research done for one for the other, so.
So there's no action that we have to take on that tonight?
I guess the only thing would be, I did send out the draft, revised draft. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it, other than the fact that I forgot to take the open space and recreation plan off the heading. I did add a section on community character, which we discussed last time, just a very brief one. And other than that, the only change is removing the work items for the open space and recreation plan.
Okay, good.
I know that John Weiss was hoping to get this out soon. Currently, the due date is March 18th. So if the board is comfortable, if you've had a chance to take a look at it at all, if you're comfortable, then I can work with Tracy to issue it.
I would want to throw out one thought that I voiced before, but not have made a big deal of. The amount of money available is a matter of public record, and if we're not putting this and the open space plan out, that is a, that's a plus. But I would suggest we mumble a little bit as far as the funds that are available and point out that the available funds are for the master plan, the open space plan, and sea level rise planning, which may not eventuate. But I hate to tell somebody how much money we have, you know?
Well, yeah.
Very terrible good business.
Well, I think the intention was just to issue the RFP and ask for two envelopes, one with qualifications.
Do what?
One with qualifications and one with price.
Right, I understand that.
And when we send this out, I don't think that there would be any indication of budget, and that will be discussed afterwards.
When I was a young guy, driving through the South was not the smartest thing you could always do. And there's the issue, the old joke about your car breaks down there, and they say, you ask them how much it's going to cost, and they say, "Well, how much you all got?"
Right, right.
You know, that syndrome there bothers me, and, you know, not my first RFP. I just like to advertise the funds that are available.
Yeah, well, I don't think we were planning to, so.
Yeah. No, no, no. But I think we need to state that the funds are available. But I would just suggest that we weasel word it a little bit, so the, nobody thinks that the funds that are available are all on this. Or worse yet, whatever's left over might be all going to, you know.
I would think Tracy would have some input on that, too.
Yeah, that's just a thought.
Thanks, John. Looking forward to the May town meeting. The first proposal to review is the accessory apartment bylaw revisions that Martha prepared. And John, would you like to start off with comments? Or do you have some initial comments, Martha?
Actually, if I may, I'm going to hand out the comments that Sam sent back to me. And they were basically three, three of them. I will point them out as we go through. They're just in the comments sidebar. And then I also did get a comment back from Richard Moss, who's unfortunately not able to be with us, as George said. And also, John Weiss reviewed it and said that he's fine with it so far. And we'll wait and see whether there are any other suggestions from Eric. But the comments from Sam, if you...
Is Jim right?
If you look on the first page, you'll...
I have what was sent in the email. Is that what?
The one I'm passing out is slightly different.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I should take this. Oh, you don't have one?
Spare copies. There we go. Oh, okay.
And I'm sorry, Martha, what you just circulated is, are Sam's comments?
Sam's comments are inserted.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. So on the first page, you'll see there are three comments in the bottom. The middle one says SJ2.
Yep.
So that's Sam.
Okay.
And I had raised the question about using the word dwelling or residence, and Sam's comment is, "I prefer dwelling, keeping language same as the building code."
I think that's probably Weiss.
And as Eric pointed out, in our meeting, we had been using dwelling, dwelling unit, and residence kind of interchangeably. And that's one thing I haven't done, is gone through and cleaned all of that up. But if everybody's in agreement on using dwelling, I think we'll...
I think that makes sense to do that.
His second comment is on page two for the general requirements, and it's in the middle of the page, comment SJ6. And we had originally said, under 3B, the building permit or special permit for the accessory apartment automatically lapses if the owner no longer occupies one of the dwelling units. And I had a question about that, because the building permit would have been essentially closed out. And Sam's comment was that, as well, revoke the occupancy permit, as the permit, the building permit will have been closed out. So that last sentence of B would...
Don't disagree with that, certainly.
Would be, the occupancy permit or special permit will lapse. And then on page three, near the top of the page, comment SJ8. Sam's feeling was that that sentence was redundant, because that's addressed in I below.
Yes. While deed restriction and board of health resi... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Lie without equitable health, safety. It is a bit redundant.
I would say strike that sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, usually it's better to only say it once, then nobody can pick apart two somewhat similar, but maybe not quite, sentences and eat your lunch.
I agree, because otherwise, it suggests that maybe it's a separate requirement.
Okay. And then going over two pages under seven, on the middle of the page, comment SJ11. He wants to add, under the submission requirements, things that should be shown, including door locking configuration and fire protection and separation details. That's an issue for him, as far as building code is concerned.
If he would like that, I think we ought to put that in, certainly.
Oh, yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
I think that is, it's in the code anyway, but I think it would be good to...
It's good to reinforce it.
To call it to somebody's attention at the appropriate time, and this would be...
And then his final comment down at the bottom of the page, for occupancy requirements, which, as I noted, somehow seems to have fallen off the current version, so it should go back in. And his comment is, currently, the penalty for not following the provisions of the bylaw would be just a fine under section 9711. This would now add the penalty of loss of use as well. So revoking the occupancy.
I don't know where Sam's coming from on this. Is he in favor or against?
He thinks, he's in favor.
He's in favor of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Figures more enforcement is better in this case?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So those were his comments, and since the board seems to be in agreement, I'll add those.
Other than that, that's exactly what we had before, right?
Yes.
Did John Weiss make any comments?
His comment was, he was fine with it as it is, and just wants to wait and see what Eric has.
Okay, good.
Richard's comment, I did review the draft of the accessory apartment bylaw. The only suggestion I would make is to consider adding a sentence explicitly stating that it is not the intent of this bylaw to circumvent single-family zoning. Otherwise, it looks good. My suggestion might be to add to that, it's also not the intent to circumvent two-family zoning, because we, you know, I think there's the question that keeps coming up, what, you know, whether this is, what differentiates an accessory apartment from a two-family?
Or two-family, yeah. If we just said residential portion of the zoning bylaw, or...
Well, that...
That's a little broad, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a little broad. That could get into multifamily. So I would say one and two-family zoning.
One and two-family, yeah. I think that's a good suggestion.
So...
Because the temptation will certainly be there.
And we have very specific lot area requirements and things for two families, so does the board have any other comments?
John?
I don't. I'm happy with it at this point.
Elizabeth?
I don't right now, but I'd like to give it maybe a hard read in the morning.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And I didn't say to do any additional comments that I have.
Okay. And Eric may be sending comments as well, so.
We don't need to vote on it right now, do we?
No, no, no. The schedule that we've put together will be voting on these in the next meeting.
Yeah. One thing I would say, in section eight on the last page, there's reference to owners and multiple owners, as opposed to single owners. And in the first part of the, under general requirements in the first section, there is a provision that says the term owner shall be, meaning single or plural.
Should be what?
Should be single or plural. It means, the word owner, you don't have to differentiate between owners and owners, so it makes it very simple to read. So that probably ought to be included in that last section, too. Is this only, is this for that section?
So you don't think it would apply to...
No, because it talks about for this section only, or for purposes of this section, which would be general requirements, but it doesn't talk about the entire document. Although, we can change that.
I'm not sure what you're saying, George. I think I know, but I'm not sure of it.
In some places, we have reference to owner, and other places, we have to owners with...
Owner parentheses S, yes.
And the intent is that wherever you use the word owner, it could be singular or plural.
So you'd like to come right out and say that?
Well, it's said here, but it's not in...
For the purposes of this section, owner shall imply singular or plural owners, one or more owners.
But it seems to apply only to the general requirements section.
So if we say, for the purposes of this...
It appears again for the end.
Yeah.
If we say, for the purposes of this bylaw, does that, does that cover it for you?
That would be better.
And then we'd only have to say it once? Okay.
Now, under, let's see, just above general requirements, paragraph C, that talks about accessory apartments detached from an existing single-family dwelling. There's a prior reference that apartments are allowed in existing or new single-family dwellings. Should we use or new at that same point, too?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Where are you?
Okay. Paragraph C, above general requirements, it's under accessory apartment applicability.
Right.
Page you are?
Page two.
Page two. Paragraph A says, accessory apartments are deemed to be either within or detached from an existing or new family, a single-family dwelling.
Oh, right.
Whether it should be, I think it should be...
Yes, yes, yes.
New single-family dwelling in that position, too.
You're right.
That's all I had for now.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Good. Thanks. Going on. Was there anything on definition revisions that you had, Martha?
Well, let's see, I passed these out the last time, and I'm not sure that, I mean, we didn't talk about them, and I'm not sure that anybody's really had a chance to review them. Maybe it would be useful just to go over them quickly now, if that's all right with you.
Sure.
So I'm going to pass this out.
Only got one of these. Should I have another?
Oh, actually, that was mine.
That's yours?
Oh, one another?
No, no. Is that, okay, I've got, I've got this one. I've got definitions.
So the first one that, and these are, these are all from Sam. The first one that he suggested is hung basement, and what the, basically what the requirements or conditions would be for a hung basement. As I was thinking about this, we had talked about putting this in the definitions in the bylaw, under article 11. But we don't actually reference hung basements anywhere in our zoning. So I'm wondering whether there's another way that we can deal with that. And this is kind of, it's an interpretation, or something that's developed through interpretation, but doesn't, and it's applicable to the Plum Island Overlay District, but there's nothing in the PIOD that talks about hung basements.
Yeah, it's sort of a, one of those things that everybody knows, because it's a DEP regulation, I believe. I think they've established that number of 250, have they?
Well, I think it's been developed to satisfy DEP requirements.
Yeah, sure.
So we ought to have it someplace. Maybe it should go in the bylaw. We can put it as a general definition in chapter 97 at the end, but we want to put it in the bylaw specifically, because that's where it applies.
Right. It gets back to...
Am I thinking of the right situation, when there may be an issue in terms of amending the bylaws themselves, because we need sign off from...
I'm sorry?
From multiple parties?
Well, this is, since it affects both Newbury and Newbury Port.
Right.
And this is something that's kind of specific to, to how it's developed in our community. It's not quite as easy.
Probably more zoning than PIOD, don't you think? Rather, the Plum Island bylaw, the, not the bylaw, the rules of regulations.
Oh, the wetlands, the wetlands regulations, which refers specifically to...
Yeah, I would think that more, has more to do with zoning, would it not?
Let me talk to, if you're all okay with it, let me talk to Sam a little bit more and see if we can kind of...
Well, otherwise, it's going to be out there as an orphan, so it has to be attached.
Exactly. It needs to be attached to something, because we don't want to have a definition in the bylaw that doesn't, that doesn't refer to anything.
What's assault about?
Right, okay.
Well, do we have, do we have the definition of square footage? What does, what does the floor area actually mean in zoning? FAR. Is that in zoning?
I don't, I don't think.
I don't remember it being there.
I don't think we do.
Yeah. So the next question is, does this belong in zoning at all?
Well, that, yeah, that's kind of my question.
That's the other side of the coin.
Oh, we do have FAR. I take it back, yep.
Well, that being the case, could it be stuck in there somewhere?
Maybe. That might be one way to deal with it.
But you do want to review this with Sam.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Because we also don't want it hidden.
Maybe also with Doug.
Yeah. And possibly with Ginny. I mean, she'll be reviewing all of it.
Yeah, because this, this kind of pops up in CONCON, RFDs.
Plus, we don't want to have it hidden in the documents. We're no one's going to find it.
Yeah.
It needs to be right out there.
Okay, the next one, three, was just adding the words abandoned and. And when we had our joint meeting, Sam expressed his reasons for wanting to do that, and this seems fine to me.
That's good. I like the way it reads.
And the next one was in the dimensional requirements, 97 six, and he was suggesting in the, the first, the very first paragraph reads, "Any building structure or part thereof converted, constructed, altered, or moved shall conform with the requirements for lot area frontage yards." And he's suggesting that yards be changed to setback, because he thinks that's what it actually means.
Does yard use anyplace else?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think the setbacks everywhere, so let's put it in. That's good.
And then he wanted to add, in that same section, add a footnote to the setbacks column, which says, "Setback shall not apply to buildings or structures that do not require building permit."
Okay. Elizabeth, any comment? John?
Sounds good to me.
I don't. I will just reiterate, I think there's some of the discussion that we had previously, that...
Sorry, I'm like a fence post, Elizabeth, sorry.
I think, I'm just reiterating, I think some of the discussion that we had previously, and I think it was Kathleen had noted that this could be problematic for some people, but I think this is where we landed. So, I just want to make sure that's where we landed.
Yeah, I think so, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll be clarified with Sam, then.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. And this will be going through public hearing process, so if there are, you know, issues, then...
If people take issue, then they can let us know.
Yes, yep. And then suggested changes to definitions. One was the definition of alteration to add the words minor repairs, so it would read, "Any construction addition or renovation to an existing structure other than minor repairs that requires a permit," because he's had issues with people thinking that all repairs do not require.
What's the line that he crosses for minor to major repairs?
That's a good question.
Sort of open question.
Wow. If the building inspector nails you dead, then it was clearly not minor, was it?
Yeah, if he sees it.
It's sort of like, and you probably remember, in marine law, you must proceed at a safe speed. So what is a safe speed? Well, if you get into a collision with another vessel, a judge is certainly going to conclude that was not a safe speed. Some things can stay loose.
Can Sam clarify that a little bit, possibly?
I'll ask him, yeah.
It's not essential, but I think it would be helpful for the homeowners or anybody who wants to change something to say, "Okay, what's minor?"
Right.
And I guess the answer was, come in and talk to Sam.
Yeah.
And there may be something in the code which clarifies. Do you know, minor versus...
Volume? I don't know. I know that any, any structural issue, minor, major, or whatever, anything that requires the mechanical, the MEP permits, the gas, plumbing, electrical, and now this ductwork permit, yeah, requires a building permit. Beyond that, I can't remember what the rules are. A lot of it is somewhat subjective on the part of the building official. In case any of you who was wondering who might Sam is, who is Sam? Sam is our building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn, so we don't want you to be confused out there, or saying, "Who is this person?"
And then on the next page, he was suggesting adding to the definition of floor area, comma, gross, adding unfinished attics outside the thermal envelope shall not be counted as floor area.
That's quite good, I think.
And then the only other one that we had talked about was the height, and we haven't tackled that one yet.
That is a tough one.
Is Eric going to address that somewhat, do you think?
Well, I think Sam and I were, we were going to go and look, go back and look at the proposal that was made before.
That one, in retrospect, didn't strike me as a bad, bad language. The only problem was the height.
Right.
And if we went that, brought that height down proportional to everything else we said, that might be pretty good, if we could dig that out. I've got it somewhere.
No, I've got it on my computer.
Yeah, good. Really, at the time, that was given a fair amount of thought, and the mistake was, the net effect was, it was going to scrunch down everybody, and that got, got to be problematic for a lot of people.
Right.
I don't understand why it would.
Right. And there was some concern, too, about, you know, should Plum Island be different from the rest of the town, because the issues there are different, or should they be the same?
I don't see any harm if we don't change the overall height, but just simply define what that height really means. I don't see why Plum Island would be different. Basically, we're talking a pretty standard 35-foot height, right? That's kind of...
Well, that's what we've got right now.
Yeah, but that's pretty standard.
Mean grade to mean, right, right.
In the universe.
Right.
That's about the normal vanilla garden variety building heights. But how it's defined does vary. The report used to have two definitions. One was the building inspectors, and the other was the one... The report used to have two definitions. One was the building inspectors and the other was the one in zoning. And they were not the same.
I think what the Z B A would.
That was a, a lot of years ago.
Long time ago.
Yeah.
I think what the Z B A ideally would like would be to a maximum height to, you know, to a, to a peak, to the ridge.
Yeah. And, you know.
That's black and white.
Yeah. And exclude a few odds and ends like pupilas that have less than so many square feet.
Right, right.
Spires, weather veins.
Chimneys.
Antennas.
Yep.
Sort of thing. Fences around a widow's walk.
But setting that height is, is what was problematic last time.
Oh, yeah, that really, that, that lit a number of people off, and, you know, some of that, some of that was justified. I thought.
So, um.
It could be as simple as just picking a good number for the very peak.
Which is not quite as easy, not quite as easy as, uh.
No, but that's, that's easier said than done, but once it's done.
Once it's done, then it's done.
About all we need to say. Because otherwise, the, the geometry, there are so many possibilities of geometry.
That's it.
And, and applications and permutations, combinations and stuff, that, that would be a very, very tortuous piece of legislation.
Yep, that's the issue. Um, so, um, I think those, the one other thing Eric had brought up at our Z B A meeting was the table of use regulations, um, and that whole Article Three, um, which hasn't been tackled yet. You said you, you'd taken a look at it?
What, on solar?
No, the, um, use regulations.
Yes. Do I have any comments right now? No.
No, okay.
Refresh my memory, if you would, Martha. What, what was bothering you about?
Um, I think in large part, it was the fact that the table is at the very end of our zoning.
Yeah.
So that you kind of have to, and, and we've got these district-specific things that get mentioned.
Right.
And then the basic uses are at the very end, so it's a matter of kind of reformatting and trying to bring it forward again.
Okay. A lot of bylaws have that right up front.
Right.
Like Chapter Two, right after definitions.
Right, and that's basically how we started.
Yeah.
When we put it together, it was part of that article.
So.
So.
Is he considering breaking it up, for example, just for accessory apartments or whatever we might be doing on the island to bring those forward?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
We don't know then what he exactly has in mind.
Um, I think he really wanted it, um, I think he really wanted the, the table to be front and center.
Okay.
And then anything that's kind of an exception to the table to come afterwards, but make it easier and more user-friendly.
And that's something we will need for the Maytown meeting.
Well, um, I think what we, what we need to do, probably at the next meeting, um, when hopefully everybody's here, is figure out what the priorities are, what we should try to put forward for May, and what we have time to do and what we might tackle in the fall.
Okay, good.
Because we're getting close on time.
I know it. You all set for solar?
I think so.
Okay, good. Um, John, did you get this? I gave you one, I think.
I'm sorry?
I gave you one of these.
There.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I looked over the solar bylaw for any changes that might be necessary as recommended by several people. The first point would be under the use tables again, solar power is lumped in the same category as general electric, uh, generation. Yeah, it's something that you talked about before, John, under industrial. And yet I think solar power ought to be set up as a separate element.
I agree.
With possibly three sub-elements, uh, more than two acres, less than two acres, but more than a quarter acre, and the as of right item under, uh, less than one quarter of an acre.
Now, is, are these the same numbers that we have currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the point is, is to make it stand out on its own, because electricity generation is a very broad aspect. While solar power does that, it's a strange animal in many senses.
I got to confess when, because I'm partly to blame, largely to blame for that, because I'm looking at power generation and distribution as a power plant or the, the one that goes ka-chow, 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 or uses huge amounts of cooling water, or a large transformer that hums on that line, which you really don't want. However, this state laws say you can't stop them.
Right.
You know, so.
The, uh, we have solar allowed in every use zone in our solar by, or zoning bylaw. And there are several which, as a practical matter, you can't put solar. There's not enough space, or there's too much, uh, use of it in other ways already. So I think we have to look at, to see what districts it can be eliminated from. But would it appear only to be able to be kept in the residential, agricultural, and the, uh, business light industrial along Route One? Did you have comments on that, Martha? I don't, I know you've thought about this before.
Um.
You'll never fit it in the small districts.
No.
No, you won't, um.
Other than the third kind.
Well, one of the questions is what to do with the commercial districts.
And there might be, um, I'm trying to think of, of areas where there are still some fairly large, open, undeveloped parcels. And there actually is one in the Parker River Residential.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be for a large scale. I mean, it could be one of the smaller ones, like two acres or less.
Do we have much spare open space in Parker River Residential?
Uh, well, that's what I'm there, um.
Doesn't strike me as though there's a lot there. It's basically one street, right?
Uh, well, it's Cottage Road and Riverfront.
Not all of Cottage Road, is it? Not all of Cottage Road in that? Thought it was mostly Doc Humphrey's stretch right along, uh, so-called Riverfront was most of it.
Yeah, it's from, so it's this.
Yeah, so, yeah, Cottage Road starts there, so it's, this is Riverfront, and that's the extension of Cottage, and here's the landing.
Right, right, so that, that's the parcel I'm thinking of, which actually is not in the, in the district. It's in residential agricultural.
There is a, there are a couple of fields in here, as you point out, but along here, there's maybe some marsh, and you'd never get away with putting it on salt marsh in this zone. But this is wall-to-wall houses.
Right, and then there's.
Cemetery, where's, is the cemetery right there?
Yeah, the cemetery is right there.
Exactly, yep.
Right, and then there is the, um, the Walnut Grove right there, which I think is supposed to basically not be touched.
The Walnut Grove.
There's, there's, there's a treeed area down there on the other side. You've got Riverfront coming through and the houses on one side, and then an open space on the other.
Okay.
And.
I never heard of that one.
So, anyway.
Oh, you're going to take away my Tony license.
Massachusetts state law says that solar power cannot be permitted in its entirety in any town or city. And when the bylaw was written, we had included it in the entire town, although we can use reasonable regulations and reasonable restrictions to keep power solar, or solar power in one or two or three districts, whichever we think appropriate. Richard Moss, our associate member, has also suggested using an overlay district, which is worth consideration. But I think since the bylaw is in place right now, at least for May, we would have to work within the framework of the existing bylaw.
I'd like to throw in something there that has been used as a red herring against solar by people that don't want to see solar happen, and that is the insistence that a solar farm is impermeable surface. It's sort of like a, an airfield or a superhighway.
You want to discuss that?
Huh?
You want to talk about that? I don't, is it really?
I'm sorry?
Is it an impermeable surface?
It is not, it is not. It is, there's two ways of looking at it. The engineer that had reviewed the, uh, Main Street one, I think quite rightly, not knowing that, obviously not knowing that D E P has two documents out that says you do not need to treat solar as impervious surface.
Right.
They say that, and that puts an end to the discussion. However, not everybody has read that, okay? Because D E P doesn't, they, they make pronouncements, and then they put them on a shelf, and when you, they slap you then when you have broken those rules. They don't promulgate them the way they should, okay? They may end up in the Federal Register or the state version of the Federal Register, but they don't get out to the poor working stiffs that are supposed to use them. So, you know, the engineer involved, I'm sure did not know this. And the other way of looking at it is a so-called, uh, unconnected thing, where you have something that's pervious, running, impervious, running onto a big pervious area. And that is a reasonable approach. That's the way Phil Christiansen looked at it. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and absent the D E P statements, that would be the way you'd look at it. However, D E P has said, you know, and I don't know how one argues with that when D E P says it will be treated as, it will not be treated as impervious service. I don't know how you go about insisting that it should be.
Well, I think one of the things you can do is include it within the solar bylaw with a reference.
Reference to the two documents, yeah.
Incorporate a by-reference.
And if those documents ever get repealed, then, correct me if I'm wrong, the, by virtue of referencing, that sentence gets repealed.
We don't want to restate it. We just want to reference it.
One of them is arguably a little off-base, only a little, because it refers to landfill capping, which of course is far worse than a normal brand-new field. But the other one is very, very clear. It is not, it is solar in general. And it's not only D E P, I think it's D C R and one other agency that I don't recognize.
I'm supposed to know all of them, John.
I'm supposed to know all of them, I'm sorry. Bust it again.
Right. Other changes to the solar bylaw I want to think about is at least changing site plan review approval. Authority from the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Board, and the same, same thing to make the Planning Board instead of the Board of Selection, Selectmen, the Special Permit Granting Authority. I know there are a lot of people.
Being the, no.
For both. No?
I don't.
There's been suggestions that that ought to happen.
I do think that there should be a requirement for site plan review, and we're probably better at it than anybody, any other board.
I agree.
So I think that, to that degree, it could be maybe a requirement that we provide the site plan review as a separate exercise and feed those results to the Selectmen. I don't think the, I think the Selectmen, from what I recall in my discussions with the Selectmen, I think they'd be happy with that arrangement.
In my recent discussions.
Pardon me?
They would like, uh, the whole thing out of their hands. They would like the planning board.
Okay, but that, I don't think that's appropriate, though, do you? A big solar field is probably, going back, you weren't around, but I think we kind of agreed when we were doing this that big issues that affect a lot of people, and anything that affects the public health or public safety, should be decided by the Selectmen, because that's what they're for. They own the fire department, they own the police department, they don't own the Board of Health, but they got a lot of influence there. And that probably is not appropriately a planning board function.
No.
Now, I, you know, I could be wrong.
I wouldn't disagree with that. He could argue either way. I think what you say is correct as far as Special Permit Granting Authority.
Yeah.
It has been suggested we should take it back, but that's up for discussion.
Yeah.
The site plan review, I would think, it should be with the planning board.
I'm not sure we're the appropriate, we were, I don't think we were elected to do those things. That's what I think.
More discussion is needed.
Yeah.
Well, obviously more discussion.
I mean, if they definitely don't want it, then we clearly have to discuss it.
Okay, another thing that I would like to talk about is setbacks. Right now, for fields under two acres, the bylaw provides a twenty-five-foot setback.
Yeah.
That is pretty thin.
It's pretty what?
Thin, and I think that probably ought to go up to seventy-five feet or more.
We had that discussion before.
I know we did, yeah.
Um, just so, I understand it's a setback for all four sides.
From the nearest unit to the fence line.
Right.
Yep, so all four, okay.
The fence, the fences on the property, that's okay, right? You don't have to set the fence back. I think, if I remember right, I was arguing for a smaller one, just on the basis that as you get to large units, seventy-five feet gets to be a heck of an acreage. If you've got a multi-acre field, that's a lot of, it's not like it's useful habitat. It's going to be weeds.
Well, I think, uh, John, that goes to the point here. I mean, we're talking, what's identified here as, on two acres or less. I don't, I'm not sure where the two acres, acres falls, but in any event, under twenty-five to seventy-five. But I think your point is maybe more pertinent to over two acres.
To the big ones, yeah. For the small ones, it obviously doesn't make a huge difference. If you've got a, a, one acre, twenty-five feet around one acre is, it's, it's still bigger than a breadbox, but it isn't. What's one acre? One acre is, uh, two hundred by two hundred, so that's fifty, that's twenty-five percent. You know, it's more than twenty-five percent because you've got four sides.
So what would happen if you increase that to seventy-five feet?
Well, you doggone you wipe it out. You've got two hundred by two hundred, and you take a hundred and fifty feet out of that two hundred width both ways. You, you don't have a viable, I don't think that's a viable project. And, uh, I mean, this is personal philosophy here, but I think if we don't start using the sun pretty doggone fast, this is going to be a very, very unpleasant place for our grandchildren to live. It is very, very depressing to read books on what the world will look like in the twenty-second century. It's going to be, it's going to really suck at the end of the twenty-first. But, you know, I think the planet eventually will be uninhabitable for anybody that has, any human being that is at all civilized. We're going to be back, we'll have to be very successful barbarians to make it.
So an acre is, uh, two hundred by two hundred is an acre?
Is an acre, yeah, but it's a builder's acre, forty thousand square feet. I'm, I'm round figuring it, but I can't pick that close.
But no, that's helpful to visualize.
Well, it's, it's up to two acres, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I had done some math on this at one time and made up some.
Yeah, I remember that.
Want me to do that again?
Yeah, that will be helpful. If we're going to look at this again, I think that would be very helpful, because I think the same thing comes into play with the over two, the large-scale ones, over two acres. The complaint that comes up frequently is, how does it affect nearby homes? And the further you can peel them away a little bit, so much better.
Yeah.
What about?
If you, if you do the right buffering, if you do no buffer, if you don't do anything that grows high, then it doesn't matter how far it is, because you can see it from your house. But a small amount, you can get fairly dense vegetation in a fairly small, uh, enough to hide it. It won't do anything for sound. Vegetation doesn't help you with sound, but it does help you visually. It won't, something skinny isn't going to be a very worthwhile habitat, but it will, it will solve the problem of an unsightly thing.
Something that grows very fast, white lines of grass.
Fast, yeah.
Is it reasonable to differentiate setbacks based on existing structures or dwellings, or does that get too complicated? So you have a further setback if?
Existing setbacks aren't very big. They're like ten feet on the sides. You're saying the existing zoning setbacks?
No, that if, if you.
Residential dwellings nearby or other structures.
Right, so that if the concern is that if you wanted to increase the setback for a particular reason, so could you have it be differentiated so that you had a twenty-five-foot setback if there was nothing on the abutting property?
Okay.
Versus seventy-five feet if it, if there were an existing dwelling or something. I mean, it's, I don't know how difficult that becomes.
That is a good suggestion. It does beg the question, though, the guy that owns the next property may want to develop it next year, and now we've just rented. may want to develop it next year, and now we've just rented his property less valuable. I don't know.
Or created a non-conformity on the solar lot if the setback doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah, once, now it's an unconforming situation, yeah. Are we, George, you've seen the suggestions that Richard had, right?
Yes.
Have they cranked into this, or were you planning on talking about that after this?
No, I think we had to follow up with Richard. I think that would be.
This is all you, right?
Yeah, this is really set up for the Maytown meeting. I think the overlay concept would have to be beyond that.
Oh, yeah, it's not, we'll never make that by.
No, not by May.
You know, it might take two years to put that together. That's, I think that has a lot of merit, a lot of merit for pursuing. But it's certainly not a Maytown meeting.
No, I think, I think we skipped number two on this sheet, the submission requirements, peer review, because that is something I think that we could put in for the Maytown meeting. I think that we should.
I think that would be important. As a part of the submission requirements, we would like to add that the applicant, applicant provide funds for peer review for engineering and for application completion compliance, suggested a $10,000 escrow at the discretion of the Special Permit Granting Authority. We'll discuss that.
I would throw out again the flip side of what I was saying before. I hate to see money wasted even if it isn't mine, you know? Preferably not my money wasted, but I'd rather, just as second to that, I'd say, I don't want to waste your money either.
The engineering is very technical on this stuff.
It, parts of it are, but parts of it are kind of routine. That, do we want to get into the technical engineering part? I.e. the electrical, the photovoltaic, et cetera, et cetera? I would question whether we want to have a dog in that race.
I would suggest that one of the things that might actually be more beneficial, and we did have somebody do this for the last application, is, is review or consultation on whatever agreement the town develops with the solar, because that's very complicated. And having, having some input from a professional on the structuring the agreement and what's reasonable to.
Right, there, that's something the town clearly has to be into.
Is that what you meant?
No. Okay, not, not how the electricity, how the electrons.
You're talking host community agreement? Is that what it is?
Well, how, how the funding, funds get spent. How much is it for us, basically, right?
crudely.
Yeah, so, you know, they used to call it a pilot agreement, and they don't anymore. Now it's, what is it, PPAs? And it's, it's changing all the time, so having somebody who is very familiar with, with that, the industry from that point of view, I think would be helpful. And maybe we don't need to specify what the peer review would be for. I mean, it could be for engineering, it could be for that kind of consultation. But I think that it would be helpful to have, have it in there.
Do we need to have a dollar amount?
No, it can be done by an amount determined by the board.
I would say it's going to be very job-specific. And it could be, I think it, if we simply say that it will be required and will be negotiated between the parties.
I wonder if there's some standard, and this might be a question for Lisa Mead, of having it tied to the size of the, not, not area, but maybe, you know, the power output.
Yeah, the output.
Like a one megawatt would be something.
But you could have a relatively small amount of megawatts and a fairly large set of other issues, topography.
That's true.
Proximity to neighbors. I mean, the list is, goes on and on and on. And then what if the neighbors happen to be a cemetery or a church?
Solar's pretty quiet.
True. Like cemeteries.
True.
Well, that's where most of the people that I know in Newbury are currently residing.
Hey, John, I don't think you want to go there right now. The PPA, are you talking about a public-private partnership or something?
No, no, it's, I was just, I had just had a meeting on this today, and it's gone right out of my head. But it's the purchase, I think it's a purchase-power agreement.
Okay.
Right.
Yep.
And, and again, how much do we get? What's in it for us?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's crudely put, but, okay.
Okay, in the zoning bylaw on the section, it's on page 9775, which you don't have, which funny, I'm sure. There's reference to what the Special Permit Granting Authority may find in respect to allowance of the permit. And it, one of the questions is, does the proposed use and development have a, have or have not a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the area, or the public health, safety, and general welfare? That's very subjective. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a measurable standard we can use other than personal opinion.
Can I read that, John?
Yeah, sure. It's right here.
Well, it's the old story, one man's junk is another guy's treasure, you know?
That's true.
My father had an expression, "There's no accounting for taste," said the lady when she kissed the cow.
I think at its core, it's a subjective.
Very subjective.
That is a really tough one, though, George. Very tough to quantify and get specific about.
Well, it's something I'd like to see tightened up, but I'm not quite sure how to.
Yeah.
I just don't see how we can do it.
Yeah, I, I agree that it is very loose and subject to all kinds of potential abuse or disabuse.
B actually defines, which talks about how intended operations will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings nor impair the value thereof. I mean, that's what a lot of people here are going to be concerned about.
Right.
There were further concerns, though, on the Scotland Road job by the Colby's, on the part of the Colby's.
Yes.
In that there could be some chemical releases that we don't know about yet. And that could affect the edibility of their products and their reputation.
As far as the effect on the adjacent property, that could probably be determined more by a.
Valuation.
Well, a registered appraiser, an independent appraiser of real estate, like banks use for mortgage valuation, rather than using a broker, but someone who can independently give a evaluation.
Yeah, a real appraiser, as opposed to a broker who does this.
Although the appraisers usually base it on comparables, and it's, it's very difficult at this point, the industry is.
There aren't that many comps, yeah.
Something else to be considered. Perhaps Jenny can look at, Jenny can look at this.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking, Jenny or Lisa. And Lisa's had a lot of experience with these, and so she might. Some of this came straight out of the, you know, the state model bylaw, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, been, been proved or proven as, as it's been applied.
I think it just needs another look at.
There was one other that bit us in the rear end on this last one, and that was, we said professional estimator. I think this was my fault.
Yes, it was your fault.
It was a judge by somebody, I'm not sure who, that we should have said independent estimator.
Yeah, so this might be the time to put that in there.
And I am still totally convinced that the fact that the guy is a PE does not make him, under any circumstances, a professional estimator.
So we should, we should put that in.
By me?
We should specify that it should be an independent or a third-party.
Independent, professional estimator. And I, you know, if we're going to that, I would go to the extent of saying that has with demonstrable experience in solar farm demolition estimates. I was not thrilled with the estimate that I saw there. Though he's got crews of people that never need to go to the bathroom, they never take a break, they never talk to each other, and it certainly never rains. You know, that isn't the way you do an estimate. I've done that for a living. I was at one time a professional estimator. I'm not anymore, because you've got to keep up, and I'm not up. But that isn't the way you do it. That was a very unprofessional professional estimate.
Okay, I think we're finished on this subject, unless you have more comment?
Tree removal conflicts?
Yeah, there was, remember the last meeting we had with the last application? It was a question of how do we replace trees that are cut down? There were a lot of trees. And it was finally a contribution to the town tree fund.
Right, based on, based on a certain number of sticks, basically.
Right, yeah. In the bylaw, there's some reference to cutting down trees, and then there's another reference later on about cutting down trees of six-inch caliber or greater. There's a con, I don't think there's a conflict between the two, but they have to be integrated.
It can, the numbers can get astronomical.
Yes, they can.
If you want to replace every tree that gets cut down, that can, I would think, could become a deal-breaker. But a reasonable number. Interesting, I, when we first started this, I was totally convinced that what we should protect at any cost was a mature forest. I have since read that an immature forest is the one that we've really got to worry about, because a mature forest is in a balance. It's a case of stasis, where they fall down, they rot, they burn, they grow. Okay, it falls down, it puts carbon dioxide in the air, which is used by the adjacent growing tree that hasn't fallen down yet. Whereas you get a lot more carbon intake, according to what I've read, by, sent by a small forest that is not, things are not ready to fall down yet once it's growing, such as, I would think the, the Main Street property would be in that category. Because that was a farm 30 or 40 years ago. It has not yet become a forest. The woods down behind me, when I was a kid, we used to find trees that had been knocked down in the '38 hurricane. And so at that point, that's, that's almost a 100-year-old forest, 80, 80, 90-year-old forest. That's good enough for me to call that a mature forest. Two different things.
There's an argument that these savings caused by solar power in the fossil footprint can offset cutting down the trees. I'm not making that argument, but you and I have discussed that.
We have, and I don't have a good answer on that one. Because I couldn't find people that could distinguish appropriately between carbon footprint and carbon dioxide footprint. Two entirely different things. Carbon dioxide is very much heavier than carbon, obviously, because you've got two oxygen atoms in there, not just the single carbon one. But everything I read seemed to get those two concepts, the carbon and the carbon dioxide, mixed up. I, I was not able to find any good guidance on that subject.
It needs more.
There was guidance, but it was suspect. But that would be a really good one to get a handle on.
It would be helpful, too, and we weren't able to do it for the, the Bashaw property, really, is to find some benchmark or some way of valuing the trees, so that we don't, you know.
Is there any new research that's available, do we know about?
I, I looked through a lot of things. Lisa looked through a number of things. Damon found some things.
I'm sure he.
Damon found some, some things. And there wasn't any great consistency.
Okay. It's a new science, but we don't want fuzzy science.
It is, this whole subject is new. Like medical marijuana, this is uncharted territory.
It is, it is. Martha, did you want to discuss the comments from Joe Switka?
I don't.
Swatka?
No, I don't think we can outside of the, the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, that's right.
I don't think there's anything.
But along those lines, I've left a couple of things for both of you. One is a update, revised set of narrative and a plan for the 76 Newbury Port Turnpike. That's come in. And then a plan for the sled road, revised plan for the sled road project.
This is the sled road, okay.
Has Joe looked at 76 yet?
He just picked it up today.
Oh, he just got it?
Yeah.
And on the 14th for sled road, that's a 10, correct?
That's a 10.
Okay.
Yeah, if we do it.
Yep.
I will say, Bill DeFrancesco came in to talk to me yesterday about the viability of actually having the sidewalk, given the snow cover. So we're just going to touch base next week and see.
I would be concerned about safety in that kind of topography.
I asked him about that specifically.
Yeah. It's his problem, the liability problem is not inconsiderate.
I drove by there this morning and sort of looked as I drove. I drove by there this morning and looked in as I drove in, drove by, and there's a lot of snow in there.
Yeah.
I have walked it without two feet of, three feet of snow.
Maybe in the woods, there wouldn't be so much, but there's a lot.
And, you know, even without the snow, walking that is, you've got to be paying attention.
Right.
Now, when all of the booby traps are hidden by the snowdrift, I'm not sure that's a real good place to.
Not safe.
I don't think it is.
I lost my snowshoes.
I found my snowshoes.
Did you?
I lost them, yeah, I got them back.
Good. Are there any liaison reports?
I'll just report that the Board of Selectmen, the meeting was supposed to be last night and was rescheduled for tomorrow night at 7:00. I may or may not be able to be there. I'm supposed to be meeting a train at 7:45. If it's going to be late, then I'll stay.
Are you heading in to be a juror or just to be brutalized again?
No, totally unrelated. Unrelated. No, I call, I'm supposed to call back the courthouse now on February 12th after 6:00. But it would be, I don't know if any of you can be here.
What date are we talking, sorry?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night for the Selectmen. The issue is that.
Christ, I've got another meeting tomorrow night.
Richard's appointment is up, and Richard is ill, probably will not be able to be there. And it would be good if at least somebody from the board was there to just put in a word. The Selectmen have the letter of recommendation, and John Weiss and I have both talked to Chairman Walker about it, so I think they're all set, but just in case there are any questions.
I can try, I'll let you know.
Okay.
That would be good if you could. I, I normally would, but I've got a meeting that only happens once a year, and I really have some business to do there that's.
You don't have to give an excuse.
No, I just.
That's okay. You don't want to go, do you?
I'm tight tomorrow, but if you can't go, let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know.
I should know by late afternoon whether I can make it or not, so.
I'll drop in on my way home, but the City Town Hall may be locked by then.
No, but let's all talk together tomorrow, and we'll see where we stand.
Okay.
MVPC, John, nothing?
Don't get me started.
Okay.
No, seriously, I do have something that is of, of general interest. Sea level rise. John had made some tentative discussions against, with Chris Hillkey, who was the National Wildlife Federation person that headed up this Great Marsh study for the six towns up and down the coast from here. And that never eventuated. So I, I emailed him and got no response either. But I did get a response yesterday from the head of the Ipswich River Watershed Group, who had been subcontracted by the Wildlife, National Wildlife.
Federation?
Federation, yes, thank you, NWF. To, to deal with adaptation as it pertains to the towns. They have dealt with the critters, the marsh, that work is done. And now it's up to, you know, the idea is to go at the towns. And there is, there appears to be a significant amount of grant money available, which certainly would mean that our very informal group needs to get formal. You don't, you don't give grant money to a collection of random people that don't even have a name or, we don't have a name for our group, let alone any, any. Anyway, that can take care of itself.
Okay.
But right now, that would look like that is coming alive. And what they, what they are looking for, what Wayne is looking for is a bottom-up kind of thing, where the town tells them what they think. where the town tells them what they think, what we think we need to be doing, and they critique and help us to put that into some reasonable format.
But doesn't make, doesn't make sense to do it on a town-by-town basis, or get a group of towns together?
Well, what they, yeah, good point.
I think that's...
Because what they've done is taken the six towns and broke, broken them in half. And we in Newbury Port are very connected because of their industrial park and our little river. That is a major problem, not for us, for them. So, the way, what was explained to me, Salisbury, Newbury Port, and Newbury will be one group. And the idea is that we will work together. And I think that we don't interface that much with Rowley. So on the other side, we have more of a connection with Newbury Port, and Salisbury has similar kinds of a populated beach like we do, and Newbury Port does.
That makes sense.
You know, so I, I see as commonality there that doesn't exist as you go, go south.
Yeah, it'd be Rowley, Ipswich, and Essex.
Rowley, Ipswich, and Essex, yeah.
Makes sense.
So, that may be coming alive. Right now, I think there's still a lack of a signed contract somewhere or another that probably isn't gonna happen immediately. They're looking at maybe a two-year program for that.
Did they talk about the amount of money that might be available?
They did, I'm not sure I wanna put it out in the air.
Okay, that's fine, that's good.
But, yeah, they did.
It's out there anyway.
In round figures, yeah, it's out there.
Conservation Commission?
We had our first go-around with the sled road project. Doug was not there, it was basically a presentation, and as you all know, I've got some, some issues that... Well, Doug and I at least have some issues that probably will be shared with the rest of the commission that I don't think are completely resolved yet.
Yeah, we can't really talk about that right now.
I understand.
Okay, zoning Board of Appeals, anybody have zoning Board of Appeals?
No, I'm not telling you what the issues are.
ZBA?
No, we're gonna need to elect a new representative, representative to the ZBA, but we should probably, yeah. But we should probably wait until everybody's...
Settled.
Settled in here. One other thing for the selectmen, actually, I had a meeting this afternoon with Steve Long from Borrego, and they are planning to go ahead with the, a resubmission of the one thirty-six Main Street project. They're withdrawing the one that's in play right now without, or they, they've asked the selectmen to allow them to withdraw it without prejudice.
And they're giving us a new plan?
It's gonna be the same plan, but with additional information addressing questions that were raised, raised before.
But the basic plan hasn't changed substantially?
Basic plan has not changed substantially. The footprint is pretty much the same, but they've addressed the, the wetland crossing and some of the other things. Current schedule is that they will be submitting the application to the selectmen at their February twenty-fourth meeting, with the hope to have the public hearing on March twenty-fourth. And they'll be submitting to the Concom in the same timeframe Susan and I met with them.
Okay, that's interesting.
So, but footprints, footprint's the same, I think, no, no changes in the technical...
More detailed information on what they've already submitted.
Yep. But they will be notifying, whole new legal ad and notifying the abutters and, and all of that.
Excellent, no other agenda items, Martha?
None from me.
I think we're all clear then. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, close it. So moved.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.